All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome. We're going to go ahead and begin tonight's meeting of the Capitola City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand. Councilmember Botor.
Here.
Councilmember Story.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here. And I believe that we're waiting for Councilmember Bertrand to join by phone. We're having some technical difficulties, but he should be with us soon. In the meantime, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. So we're going to move on to a report on closed session.
I believe our city attorney is calling in at the moment, but there was two items listed on the closed session agenda, conference with labor negotiations, labor negotiators, excuse me. The city council met with labor negotiators and gave direction, took no reportable action. There are MOUs with most of the groups listed for labor negotiations on the open session agenda. The liability claim of Esther Phillips was discussed in closed session. It will be agendized for the next council meeting in open session.
Do we have any additional materials for tonight's meeting?
Yes, there were three additional materials sent out prior to the meeting, the staff report and supporting materials for item 7F. There was a public comment in support of item 8B, and there was an updated staff report and attachments for item 8G.
Great, thank you. Are there any additions or deletions for tonight's agenda?
Staff has no changes.
Great, thank you. Let's see. Now's the time for public comment, but before we move on, I think there was some instructions perhaps from staff on how to participate in tonight's meeting that I think would be helpful before we begin public comment. Do we have that information that we could share?
We do.
Thank you.
So, in accordance with the current Santa Cruz County Shelter in Place Order and the Governor's Executive Order N 2920, this meeting is not physically open to the public. As you can see, council and staff are meeting over Zoom, and there are several ways for the public to watch and participate. As always, the city council meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and will be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. and on Saturdays following the first rebroadcast at 1:00 p.m. on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. If you are watching on community TV and would instead prefer to join the Zoom webinar, please visit the City of Capitola homepage and click on City Council Meeting under Upcoming Events as you see circled on the screen. As a webinar attendee, your microphone is muted for the entire meeting unless you request to be unmuted during a public comment period. You do not need a microphone, camera, screen, or computer. If you want to listen to the meeting, the meeting is accessible by landline or mobile phone. To join the webinar using a telephone only, dial any of the following numbers on the screen now. The webinar ID is also provided here. As the mayor just mentioned, the mayor will announce the public comment period for each item. There are several ways to make a public comment. If you are a Zoom webinar attendee, simply click Raise Your Hand and wait to be unmuted by our moderator. If you've called into Zoom by phone, you can dial *9 to raise your hand and again wait to be unmuted. You can also email public comment. Send your email to the address shown on the screen now. One comment made verbally or by email per person per item is allowed. If you send more than one email about the same item, the last received will be read and displayed. Comments received outside the public comment period will not be included in the record. Thank you.
All right. Now is the time for members of the public to address the council on items not on tonight's agenda. I see we have a hand up already, and I'll pass it over to Larry to moderate our public comment tonight, and I will leave it up to our staff that are present in chambers tonight to ensure our three-minute timer is going.
So we have our hand raised. Raymond Cancino.
Good evening, council. How are you? This is Ray Cancino, CEO of Community Bridges. Just wanted to have a public comment on last week's decision on the severe budget cuts to nonprofits. We're really disheartened that during a time of such immense and incredible need in our community, the council moved forward with the budget as suggested. We understand the current council's approach, but we really wish that the council took a different approach to try to solve the problem at hand. We hope that, as my public comments were stated last week, that you will work with nonprofit organizations to try to figure out other creative ways to raise revenues and to increase the ability to potentially offset some of these potential cuts that will have a detrimental impact on our community. And we hope that you continue to work with us on having creative ways as we reopen and use tourism, which is the number-one way Capitola raised funds, to be able to also help offset and hopefully invest in our community and our community needs. So thank you for your time and thank you for your service. And I know these decisions are not easy, and you do not take them lightly, and we appreciate your partnership.
Thank you, Raymond. We appreciate your comments. Are there any other public comments tonight?
I do not see any. Oh, wait, I do see a... But I think that's for the item on the agenda. I can make sure, but I think it's for the... Maura, is that for the item 8G or just regular public comments? Okay. All right. Well, I have a... I have a couple emails that I will try and get read. Okay. Sorry. Share screen. Okay.
Hello, Capitola City Council. I have learned that the BLM is planning a protest in our village on July 1. I do not see it on your agenda, so I will submit in public comment. As a resident of Capitola, I am concerned about the group being allowed to assemble in the Monterey Park area. This is a neighborhood park where neighbors take their children to run in the grass and play. It is also in a residential area. As a nearby resident, I am not terribly excited about this decision to allow the meetup to be in the park. If this protest must take place, perhaps a better meeting area is in the lower city parking lot rather than our grassy neighborhood park in a residential area. The parking lot is paved and can handle the extra foot traffic that this indeed will bring rather than in a grassy park. I am confident you are planning the correct police presence to protect residents and the businesses in the village where these protesters will walk. I am particularly concerned, however, for the people using the outside dining areas in the streets of the village that has just recently been established. What particular attention will be paid to these visitors' protection? Thank you for your consideration. Cheryl Lynn Olstad, Capitola resident.
I have a couple more.
Dear City Council Members, Leah Samuels, Executive Director of the Human Care Alliance, here. We wish the council took a different approach to solve the budget problem and hope that you will look to other ways to ensure you...
Oh. Sorry. Stop.
...the budget problem and hope that you will look to other ways to ensure you meet the growing needs of your constituents. We are not looking for handouts. We are a critical piece of public safety just like the police department. The ACLU has called for a divestment of police departments because they really aren't best equipped for much of the work they are tasked with. One suggestion made by the ACLU is to develop mobile crisis services, peer crisis services, and crisis hotlines and warm lines, where people can call when they just need to talk to someone who understands what it's like to live with mental health problems, to support people who have a behavioral or mental health crisis. This is the future of public safety. We are not here to attack you or question the good you have done in your life. We are here to work with you to make appropriate changes as new facts come out which should influence how you fund public safety. We are not here to attack the police. This is not a police v. nonprofits appeal. This is an appeal for you to start questioning if the status quo of how we respond to hard economic times is really in line with best practices for best outcomes. These are not easy changes to make logistically, but it is easy to start working with us to try something new and be an example to other community leaders that you are brave enough to hear about the systemic inequities in our country and take action. Fighting inequity is not a community service. It is our responsibility. It is the right thing to do, and in the long run, it actually benefits everyone's public safety and finances. Thank you for your time. Leah Samuels, Executive Director, the Human Care Alliance. My name is Bob, and I have lived in Capitola for 40 years. I've used Meals on Wheels for a number of years. I'm sad to hear that the City of Capitola is considering cutting funding for the program. I know it's one meal, but it could be your only one meal of the day. It may seem funny living here in Capitola and needing assistance, but the world is tough out there right now, and it's very hard for seniors and disabled. I think it is a big mistake if you are considering cutting the program from audio transcription.
This is the last one.
My name is Sister Joan Derry, and I am living in Capitola, and I have been grateful to receive Meals on Wheels for the last five or six years. I'm aware that there is some kind of preparation or consideration that there's going to be a cut to the funding for the Capitola area. I feel very strongly that there are a number of people besides myself who are very needy for meals because of age and health. I hope that won't happen, and it would be very detrimental for me and others. Besides helping me in terms of my health, financially, I'm on a very strict budget, so it has really been a great gift to me, and I am very grateful for it. I just am hoping that there'll be no change and that the wonderful people I've met who have come to be of service will be able to continue. From...
That is the last email?
All right.
There's no other hands raised.
All right. Thank you all for your comments. We appreciate it. We're going to move on to city council and staff comments now. If there's any member of the council that would like to make a comment, please use the Raise Hand function. We'll start with Vice Mayor Ebert Brooks. Has her hand raised?
Great, thank you, Mayor Peterson. So I just wanted to ask that staff bring back at our next city council meeting some options in bringing back lifeguards now that our beaches are going to reopen. I'd like to see what some... to revisit that. As mentioned, we would do so when we decide to not move on with that contract. And also, I want to say that as a leader in our community, I feel it is necessary to remind our community that we must practice anti-racism in order to shift the paradigm of intolerance. Racism is real, and it exists everywhere, even in Capitola. Therefore, we must take action to be part of the solution. If you are interested in joining the movement, on July 1 at 5:00 p.m., there will be a Black Lives Matters March in Capitola. This peaceful protest is sponsored by the same group that put together the Paddle Out and March in Santa Cruz. For those concerned about safety, our police department and staff have been working directly with the group's director. For those of you concerned about your health and safety in relation to COVID, there are many other ways to support the cause if you don't feel comfortable in attending, such as shopping at black-owned businesses or donating to organizations that support communities less fortunate than ours. And as I've said in previous council meetings, I will continue to exercise my privilege as an elected official to speak fearlessly and with cause, and I will continue to remind our community of my message at every city council meeting until the protests have ended. When I look back at this time, I want to be proud of our history and changes that we made during my service. I want to be part of the solution, and I hope our community does too. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Brooks. And I don't see any other hands up from other council members. So, all right. So before we move on, I just want to thank you, Vice Mayor Brooks, for your comments. And we received a public comment about concerns for safety. I know we received an email about concerns that a protest would... Quote from the email, "Go bad." In our discussions, in my discussions personally with the organizer, I have no reason to believe that that will be the case. In my understanding of the violence that has occurred in protest, that this has largely been determined to be from outside groups who are using the Black Lives Matter movement as a way to sow discord in communities, and it's not the protesters within the movement themselves causing this kind of damage and violence. So I'm looking forward to supporting this movement. violence. So, I'm looking forward to supporting this movement. Thank you, Vice Mayor Brooks, for your support of this movement. And moving forward, I think this is gonna be a good opportunity to support a social movement that's very much needed in this time. With that, I see no further comments from staff. We're gonna move on, or excuse me, from council. We'll move on to see if there are any staff comments tonight.
I think all of our comments are wrapped up in the presentations and the COVID update, so no.
All right. Great. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item seven, which is our consent calendar. All of the items listed on the consent calendar will be enacted in one motion in the form listed on the agenda. There's no separate discussion on these individual items unless the motion, or excuse me, unless a member of the council or of the public selects to pull an item for separate discussion. I do see that Councilmember Botorff has his hand up. Are you looking to pull an item from consent, Councilmember Botorff?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a comment on one item. Let's see, item, item E. I do plan to vote to support it. I just want to make a comment on that item.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and hear your comment.
Okay. I know that at this time, it's important that the council scrutinizes every dollar that we spend and receive. I know that the restaurant and the work has been impacted during this time. And I can appreciate the generosity of staff making the recommendation. They're gonna be opening on the 19th and we're not gonna charge them for the rent. I just know that in other events that may happen later on this year, we've shown tremendous generosity to businesses. And we may not be in that position moving forward to extend such generosity because we are making significant tax and I think it affects everybody in our city. So, I'm okay with supporting this measure, but I just, when it comes to property that the city leases, we need to be very concerned about what gifts we give away at this time. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to make this comment.
Thank you, Councilman Roche. All right. Seeing no further hands up from any council members, we are looking for a motion to pass consent agenda.
I move that we pass the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Betran, the second by Councilmember Story. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Bertrand.
Aye.
Councilmember Botorff.
Aye.
Councilmember Story.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Most unanimously. We're gonna move on to our general government and public hearings, beginning with item 8A, an update on the city's pandemic response. And I will turn it over to staff for a staff report.
Mayor and council, I want to apologize. I was trying to share my screen on the earlier introduction to the meeting and I realized after I'd done it that I was sharing the screen with only myself. So, this time, let's see if I can more successfully share my screen and then pull up the slides. Okay. So, I believe this is the seventh or eighth update we've done since the pandemic has begun. One of the things we usually start with is taking a look at the situation here locally. I am sure as folks know that the last week, we certainly had a troublesome day several days ago where we had, I think it was 20 or maybe just over 20 cases recorded in the county, which was by far a new high. Here in Capitola, we have had a significant increase in cases. Last week, I think I reported that it was eight cases in Capitola. This week, it's 13. So, certainly, the trend hasn't been great for us this last week. The overall, the county of Santa Cruz is doing well. This is a chart that shows the number of, the percent of number of cases per 100,000, percent of the population that has been infected, and compares the various counties in our state. And you can see that Santa Cruz County is still among the leaders, one of the lower case incident rates compared to other counties around the state. Statewide, I'm sure you've heard the news that the numbers have not been great. Again, we've been hitting some record highs, I think, in terms of total cases where I think recently we saw 5,000 cases statewide, a number of days, maybe it was yesterday or the day before. So, the overall trend is not looking positive. However, we just need to keep our eye on it and see how things progress as we move forward. Yesterday, the health officer issued an order that lifted the beach restrictions. So, at this point now, there are no restrictions on beach use. In addition, the health officer reissued their face cover, her face covering order to more closely align with the state order so that they're basically the same order, so there wasn't any difference between the two. And as everyone knows, on June 18th, the governor issued an order that mandated face coverings be worn throughout California. I want to talk about a couple of different sort of funding pieces, one of which we have not yet talked about as a council, and then a second one we'll touch quickly on the CDBG funding. CARES Act funding, there is an allocation in the proposed state budget of about $12.28 per capita allocation to local cities. For Capitola, that would mean about $125,000. There was a formula for cities with populations over 300,000 where they would receive significantly more, but for cities under $300,000, it's the $12.28 per person. That obviously doesn't go very far in closing a $4.5 million budget deficit. And in addition, the revenues are restricted in what they can be used for. It really needs to be used for expenditures that were incurred as a direct response of the COVID-19 health crisis. They can't have been budgeted before the crisis began and they need to have been incurred between March 1st and the end of the year. So, right now, we've identified about $30,000 of COVID-related expenditures that are clearly eligible for reimbursement. However, the final guidance from the state has not yet been issued. And so, when that guidance is issued, I think we'll have a clear understanding about whether some of the police over time and the policing costs that we've expended, whether those are eligible or not. And so, at our meeting in July, we plan to come back to the council with an update about whether there is more money in this 125 that we'll get from the state or whether it's been, already been expended on the existing response that we've had. The CDBG funding, we spent some time talking to the council about that. We were actually hoping to come with an update. You recall that we applied for the CDBG funding. We appointed a subcommittee of council member, excuse me, Mayor Peterson and Vice Mayor Brooks. As a summary, we have $168,000 of CDBG funds that we can use during this first stage. That's comprised of both new grant funding as well as what we call CDBG reuse funds, which are repaid old loans. The issue at this point is, is that this CDBG guidance and training, they're still ongoing and there's still open questions about how many different grant recipients we'll be able to give money to and exactly how the funding needs to be administered. So, the subcommittee's met. They've come up with some preliminary recommendations and then we'll be bringing that to the July meeting for the council to get a more full update. And like I said, we were planning on doing it this evening, but the guidance was still in development and we realized there were still too many unanswered questions. So, with that, I'd like to ask Chief McManus to give us a short update about the plans on July 4th. Obviously, when we were putting this together, we were thinking that the situation on the beach was gonna be that we weren't gonna have the daily closures. That's obviously no longer the case. So, Chief McManus, can you talk to us briefly about the July 4th plans? Thank you.
I can. Good evening, Mayor Peterson, council members. As we're all aware, the removal of the beach restrictions daily from 11:00 to 5:00 is effective at midnight tonight, as mentioned. And so, that changed our July 4th plans, operational order mentally, but not significantly. The one significant change is that we will not be utilizing private security to staff many of the entrances to the beach as was part of our early plan because we don't believe there's gonna be a need for that without the restrictions on the beach. So, when we talk about July 4th, as most of you know, that is by far the busiest holiday we have during the year here in the city. Not the busiest event for the year, but the busiest holiday in this year, but before it's fallen on Saturday, the first time in many years that the actual holiday has fallen on a weekend. We expect that it's gonna be even busier. In fact, it's a three-day operational period for us in the police department as opposed to a single-day operational period. So, we will have all officers working on July 4th on that Saturday, where the city divided into two command locations, the beach command and patrol command. We have a large number of officers assigned to the beach command, seven total, with two motor officers and two officers on bicycles, primarily working 11:00 in the morning until about 9:00 at night, with the beach closing as we always do at 10:00 PM on July 4th. And we will have an operational command post as we've done many of the years past up at New Brighton Middle School. I'll be up there with some of my supervisory staff up there on the school grounds. We're establishing, we did it for the first time last year, a fireworks hotline here at PD. It'll be staffed by a couple of our volunteers. I'll push that information out via social media at the beginning of the week, next week, so that we provide our citizens and others in the area the ability to directly contact us if they have concerns or complaints about illegal fireworks. By the way, as we all know, the only allowable fireworks by law are the safe and sane fireworks, and those are only allowable on private property, as a reminder. Thanks a lot to Public Works, working with us on this plan. They will have the portable lighting out there to be utilized if needed late in the evening, three light extensions on the beach area. We do not have lifeguards on duty for the July 4th weekend. However, we have made contact and are continuing to maintain our contact with Central Fire and their water rescue personnel. We have morning briefings and afternoon briefing. We'll be in touch with them Friday, Saturday, and Sunday so that we can connect with regard to concerns, update on numbers, and certainly update on staffing needed, as well as, most importantly, the direct contact with those emergency services should we have a need for lifeguards on the beach. Public Works is working through the weekend as they always do with their staff. Thanks, Steve Jesper. They'll be working through the weekend with us to make sure that they're available to take care of some of the trash needs, the cleaning of the bathrooms, and then other issues that might come up during the weekend that require some Public Works response. And so, we're looking forward to a busy, enjoyable weekend, a three-day operational period, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, with our maximum personnel or staffing taking place on Saturday, and then plenty of officers available on both Friday and Sunday. And I'll turn it back over to the city manager for questions. Thank you.
So, I just have one more slide before I wrap up this presentation. Just a summary of the open facilities at this point. City Hall, the police department, city playground parks, although the play structures, I believe, remain closed. The wharf and the beach are now open. The beach parking lots are open. The closed facilities are the community center, the museum. I know that they are working on an opening plan for the museum. And then the select parking along the Esplanade that's been closed for the outdoor dining. And with that, I'm available for questions.
All right. Do any council members have questions? It looks like Councilmember Botorff, is your hand up for a question on this item?
Sorry, Mayor. I'm not taking my hand back down. Thank you for that.
No, no problem. All right. Councilmember Story.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. My question is, you know, with the public health officers opening the beach, but at the same time, and with the state mandating face coverings, was, my question was, what is our plan to enforce face coverings and also to assure that the businesses are going to be requiring face coverings for the patrons and their premises are in line for their businesses?
So, I will reply to the first part of the question, which was about the beach. The face covering orders apply to when you are out of your home, in public, indoors, and outdoors when social distancing cannot be observed. So, being on the beach in and of itself without a face mask on is not a violation. It's being on the beach if it's crowded without a face mask. What we have been doing so far with the face coverings, and I believe that this is consistent with most jurisdictions in the state, is really operating almost like a code enforcement process that we will support businesses if they need help with a customer who refuses to wear one going into the store. But we have not had active patrols going out and looking for folks to sight outside of the face masks. So, we offer, we make ourselves available to the individual stores. We have communicated with the stores about making sure that their employees understand what the store's policies are about the face mask and how they expect them to enforce it. And we certainly are make our officers available should the store need help with enforcement. Chief McManus, do you have anything to add about the face mask, face covering enforcements?
I think you, just a couple of things. I think you touched on most of it. We will be visible on the beaches in an effort to gain compliance as it relates to both social distancing and facial coverings, both for the public when they can't maintain the social distancing requirements. They should be wearing a mask, as was mentioned. We talked about that previously, as well as a resource for the businesses or an ability to, or efforts to continue to communicate with the businesses to make sure that they are adhering to the requirements of the new outdoor dining specific to distancing and facial coverings. And those who aren't participating in the outdoor dining are the requirements that are laid out in the NFA, and asking them to ensure, and most of them do, they have the proper signage and the proper employees and staff in place to communicate with their patrons to gain compliance, ensure that the patrons are complying with official, social distancing and official covering laws.
Thank you for that response.
All right. Any other council members have questions? Seeing none, I will turn it over to Larry, our moderator, to help us out with public comments on this item.
Mayor Peterson, I see one hand raised. Janelle?
Aye. I would just like to know that if we are opening the beaches, why we do not have the require, or any lifeguards on the beach?
Thank you for your comment, Janelle. And when we return back to, for council consideration, perhaps that's something we can discuss. As a general rule, public comment is a time for comments to the council, but not for necessarily a back and forth between council and residents. We do hear your comments and I will do my best to try to address it when it returns back to council for further consideration and discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Larry, is there any further public comment?
I do not see any public comments, any more hands raised, and I do not see anything in email.
Okay. All right. With that, we will bring it back to the council for further discussion and for, and for a vote. So, I just wanna start off, and I'll be brief, because I know that Vice Mayor Brooks brought up the question about lifeguards, so that will be, I believe, agendized for a future meeting. I want to again reiterate that the city had no, we were not the agency that made the determination that the beaches were closed, and we weren't the agency that made the determination that the beaches would be reopened. And so, we just received notice of that, I believe it was on Wednesday. And so, by then, it was only, well, that was yesterday. So, we didn't have a lot of time for consideration of this. But I do appreciate the concern that was brought forward and Vice Mayor Brooks is ahead of the curve on that one and asking for us to consider it a future meeting. So, it's definitely worth a discussion. So, I appreciate the public comment on that. Bring it back to other council members for any further discussion on this. And if not, then I believe we need a motion to determine that all hazards related to COVID-19 still exist and there's a need to continue our action.
Motion to recommend, approve staff recommendations to continue necessary action.
I'll second.
A motion by Councilmember Botorff and a second by Vice Mayor Brooks. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bertrand?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Botorff?
Aye.
Councilmember Story?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brooks?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to item eight B, real property negotiations, easement grant to Pacific Gas and Electric Company at City Hall property, and I'll turn it over to Staff for staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Steve Jesper, Public Works Director, and I will be sharing my screen here. Mayor, councilman, before you, is to grant an easement to Pacific Gas and Electric Company for the installation of equipment in an antenna on City Hall property. This is in response to the public safety power shut-off that we experienced last fall when City Hall and property along Capitola Avenue, Bay Avenue, were without power during those public safety power outages. A little background, in fall last year, as I mentioned, City Hall, commercial and residential properties along Capitola Avenue, Bay Avenue, and Depot Hill were affected by a power shut-off. These shut-offs were a result of high winds in the Santa Cruz Mountains, not necessarily local Capitola conditions. At the request of city staff, PG&E has developed a project to interconnect the grid serving the village with the grid to north of Capitola Avenue, which will help alleviate that problem. And here's a map showing the outage areas, and what they're proposing is a connection down here. This is Capitola Avenue, City Hall is right here. So the village all had power during these, these outages. From the trestle up, and then expanding as we went above, there was no power. They are proposing to do an interconnect between these two microgrids, if you will, that will, as long as the local conditions allow, not, eliminate the outages in this mapped area. In order to complete this project, PG&E would like to obtain an easement from the city to install an underground vault, above-ground cabinet, and an antenna on City Hall property. So you can see, here's a street view looking at City Hall from Capitola Avenue, you can see where the proposed easement is located. We, in discussions with PG&E, we asked them to look at other sites, mainly railroad properties, to see if there are easements that would be less impactful to the outage of City Hall, and PG&E unfortunately was unable to secure any other easements. The railroad does not grant utility easements to any utilities, so they're, were definite no. They looked at some other properties, but due to utility conflicts in front of, in this general area, was the only place that they were able to identify. This is a snapshot of, of exactly very similar equipment. You can see this area here is the vault, this is the above-bounds data cabinet that will be used, and this is a portion of the matched antenna. This is what we will see in front of City Hall if we move forward with this. Easement details, the easement grants PG&E the rights to construct, maintain, and operate this equipment, grants them the right to trim, remove landscaping that may interfere with the equipment or their ability to access it. The city will be able to maintain some landscaping in the easement, and right now, they have indicated, PG&E has indicated, that they will let us paint the cabinet with their prior approvals. We have to submit a proposal to them. Painting cabinets is something we've done with our traffic signal cabinets throughout the city, and also several of our vaults along the Esplanade. Concerns and benefits, so, that's certainly the biggest concern, is they, it's located right in front of City Hall and Museum, it's going to be visible, and it's permanent equipment that will remain there. The easement also does not limit the amount or the size of the equipment PG&E can place in the easement. So, at this point, PG&E has indicated we could propose some language to them, and we are working with the city attorney, to propose that language that would probably limit the equipment to anything necessary to continue eliminating the power outages. The benefit is obviously the reduction of P S P S outages in Capitola. So our recommendation tonight is to offer as the city manager to negotiate the terms and executing easement deed, granting Pacific Gas and Electric Company a non-exclusive utility easement, and installation of new underground box, above-ground cabinet, and antenna on city-owned property located four twenty Capitola Avenue, A P N thirty-five, one forty-one thirty-five, none of the City Hall property. That's my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Pull up the participants panel here, so I can get an idea if there's any questions.
Oh, Mayor, if I may, excuse me, Gina Arnold and Alexis Herrera are both, attendees to tonight's meeting, aren't available from PG&E to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. It looks like we have Councilmember Bertrand have the question, and then after that, we'll go to Councilmember Story.
So, Mayor, I'm concerned about if the city is planning to do any construction, or development, or any kind of changes to that property, and how that would affect us, working with PG&E.
So, the easy answer is, this is an easement we're granting to them. If we wanted to move that equipment, we would have to both provide a new spot for it that would work for PG&E, and potentially pay to relocate that equipment to them. So this is a definite burden on the property there.
Well, do we have much that would cost, usually work with PG&E is pretty difficult at best?
Um, it'd be, I do not have a cost, whatever potentially costs to move this equipment, though.
Hmm. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Story, you got a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Maybe a couple of questions. Steve, if we approve this grant of easement, what level of assurance do we have that we will no longer be subject to those power outages? And my second question, a more technical question, but since we're the grantor on the grant deed, I understand that PG&E is paying us thirty-seven hundred dollars for the easement, but on the grant deed, it said this is a conveyance where the consideration and value is less than a hundred dollars. So I was wondering if somebody could reconcile those two facts for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Story, I'll ask one of the PG&E representatives to address the first question, and regarding the second question, we will work with the city attorney's office to reconcile any difference between the, the offer and the easement deed. So Gina or Alexis, can you answer the question regarding the likelihood of us having an outage again here in this area? Thank you.
Yeah, good evening. This is Alexis Herrera, I'm the Project Manager Program Manager for the P S P S program at PG&E. So, the reason that it was developed for this specific area was to eliminate or alleviate at least the impact of the P S P S that impacted you from that map. We are very confident that if things progressed like they did last year with the P S P S, which was a very kind of normal P S P S situation, that this would alleviate all of those outages within that area. Of course, we can't predict what might happen in the future for how P S P Ss might act, but the way that it was described, which is how the feed comes into the community, was very accurate, that was right on, and the feed that comes into the community, which is what was impacted, could very well likely be impacted again. And so in reaction to that, which is why we developed it where it was, we're, we're very confident that it's greatly going to minimize the impact, if not alleviate it altogether. And again, I just want to stress that we can't predict what the P S P S event will look like, but we're very confident that this will alleviate future P S P S events.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Herrera, for that response. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Bertrand, do you have your hand up again? You're muted right now, Councilmember Bertrand.
Yes, I do. I do have another question, Mayor. This may be completely out of blind ignorance, which I admit, but why can't we just lease the property of some long-term agreement? The issue I have is we've lost control over the use of our property by doing this particular easement. If we leave it, then we have some choice.
I'll start the answer, and maybe one of the PG&E representatives can help me out here. PG&E has a standard practice of only investing the installation of equipment on permanent easements, that's what this is expressed to us, and I don't think they would proceed on anything with a permanent easement.
That is correct. This, this project is solely at PG&E's expense, and it can be very costly for us to do all of this installation work, not just the actual construction part of it, but the design and the management, and then ultimately the installation and the maintenance of this equipment falls solely on PG&E. And again, that's, that's very costly to PG&E to only then potentially be subject to have to remove this equipment. So PG&E does not enter into leases. This is a non-exclusive easement, which means that there is allowed to be a certain amount of things in that area, but we would not be able to enter into this agreement and put in this critical equipment without a full easement in lieu of a lease.
Thank you.
We don't see any further council comments. I would, I would just, oh wait, no, our question, let's go to public comment now, then. With no further questions from the council, we will bring this to public comment. So this is a chance for members of the public to adjust the council on this item specifically. Turn it over to Larry. Larry, I don't see anyone on attendees, but maybe you can let me know if there's any emails that came in.
Right. I don't see any attendees. Let me check the emails. I do not see any emails on this item.
All right, then. With that, we're going to close public comment for this item, bring it back to the council, and switch back over here, Councilmember Botorff, do you have a comment?
I do, Mayor, thank you. I, I think this is a great project. The fact that PG&E has identified a way to bridge this gap in our city that divided our city sensibly for power, I think is fantastic. I think it should be mentioned that this is a tremendous effort by the city manager and Public Works Director to reach out to PG&E and to, to make this happen. This is good for a lot of residents, a lot of businesses. This caused tremendous financial loss for some businesses and anguish of a lot of people. So, I, I feel the sense of Councilmember Bertrand about giving this space away at City Hall indefinitely, but, you know, I think the gains far, far outweigh the unsightiness of this and future ramifications. I think it's something we can live with and work with down the road. Like I said, the gains of this are, are far too hard to measure. So with that, I'm going to make a recommendation to our motion to approve staff recommendations. I'll second that motion, and I do have a comment.
So we have a second by, excuse me, a motion by Councilmember Botorff and a second by Councilmember Bertrand. Discussion continues. Go ahead, Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, I'd like to echo Ed's comments in terms of the benefit to the community. There are a lot of businesses, there's at least a couple of emails on that, that lost money due to the brownouts, not brownouts, the loss of power, excuse me. So that could have a significant impact, so I think this is something that's very beneficial for the community in general. Thank you, Steve, I agree, for reaching out to PG&E about this.
Great, thank you. I don't see any additional council comments. I would just like to share that while the council is not in the business of assigning work to any of our committees, I imagine that should this above-ground power outlet box be painted, that there may be some kind of input by the Art and Cultural Commission, and I would ask, if they are willing, that we offer the opportunity for either some or all of the museum board of trustees to have some kind of involvement of that, just because it will be directly in front of the museum, and there is some art there already with a specific seal. So I, I would hope that we can at least offer them the opportunity to participate in this, and not necessarily require that they do, but I, I hope that as we move forward, that's something that staff will, will be willing to consider, is offering the historical museum board the opportunity to participate in deciding how the art fits in with the rest of the museum there on site. And otherwise, I agree, this is a great opportunity for the city to be less impacted as we were last year by the public safety power shut-off, and I appreciate the work of the staff and of Alexis and Jenna for their work on this. So with that, if we have no additional council comments, and it doesn't look like we do, we have a motion and a second, so can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Bertrand?
Aye.
Councilmember Botorff?
Aye.
Councilmember Story?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brooks?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. Motion carries unanimously. We're going to move on to item eight C, a resolution for the levy of Capitola Village and More's Business Improvement Area Assessment for fiscal year 2021. Send it over to staff.
Mayor, if I may, go ahead. Before you start, Jim, I'm going to refuse myself, since, you know, I'm a business owner in the village, it's subject to this assessment, so I'm going to refuse myself on this action.
Thank you, Councilmember Story. All right. Jim?
Okay, with that, the next item before you is to conduct our annual public hearing for consideration of the fiscal year 2021 Capitola Village Business Improvement Area assessments, as well as their annual plan and budget. And with that, I will turn it over to Karen Hall at the B I A to give her presentation.
Good evening, council. Obviously, this is a very unique year for the B I A and all of Capitola and Capitola Village, and so I think I'm really most comfortable with responding to any questions or particular concerns that, that might occur to you, because other than, we're running a little late on electing new board members, that will happen next month. We, hopefully, next month, we'll be hiring a new communication manager after the tragic loss of Ben Kelly, our former communications manager. Events are obviously on hold, no one knows what's happening there. We're not being aggressive about any advertising or social media promotion, because we're not encouraging people to come from out of the area. I believe, as we get closer to the holidays, we might think about advertising more to locals than we do normally, because our mission is to promote Capitola Village outside of the county, but we're not really pushing that right at the moment. And that's about it. I couldn't, Anthony was supposed to be here, so I don't know if he's signed in by phone and lurking somewhere, because he was going to give a report on the street-side dining, and so I, if it's possible, I'd love to just take any questions and see where we go from there.
Thank you, Karen. Are there any council members that have any questions? Vice Mayor Brooks, you have your hands up.
Yeah, thank you, Karen, for presenting today. Are you saying that we're going to hear from Anthony in a little while about the street-side dining and how it's going?
Apparently, he has not been able to log in, I, I don't know for what reason, so I'm certainly prepared to pass on the information that he has given me. As a restaurateur, I thought it would be most appropriate for him to do that, but if he, you know, Larry would be able to see if he was there, and I doubt that he's there.
I can see a raise hands. I'm not sure if it's him, Larry.
That's what I was going to ask you. Want me to see if this is Anthony?
Yes.
Okay. Is this Anthony at four oh?
Yes, this is Anthony. Yes, Anthony. All right. Would you like me to adjust outside dining?
Please, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so basically, the feedback is gotten, we have several residents, I mean restaurants that are utilizing, we provided positive feedback that they've been able to extend outdoor seating, and some have seemed busy. Some have seemed busy. Others, we haven't had utilizing it very much or at all. Um, the feedback I've gotten from them is either they have limited funds to, you know, purchase tables and chairs to put out there, or the other common one is they're too short-staffed right now, and they're not able to implement it with, you know, using the staff they have with the county COVID-19 guidelines in terms of crumminess and sanitizing, um, just, you know, a lot of people haven't come back to work. So kind of a mixed reviews, um, for the ones that are u- using it. You know, good thing so far. Others, you know, hopefully they'll get with it within the next couple of weeks or, you know, by July 4th or so.
Mayor Peterson, may I, may I follow up with a question?
Yes, please.
Um, and are you, I, I'm not, I'm not sure how you're allowed to use the funds in, in its entirety, but are you allowed to use the BIA funds to purchase tables or chairs or anything like that to support the businesses? You can't afford it right now?
I mean, that's something that has to be brought out to the board to be voted upon and see what, you know, type of funds are available. Um, you know, some of them, you know, some of them we can discuss with the businesses that want to do it, but that's kind of been the feedback. If you look on the esplanade, there's probably about three or four spaces right there that aren't being utilized, and maybe a couple more around the village. Um, you know, the thing is a short notice and getting people to kind of inclement it quickly, digging hasn't been the easiest thing. So I think right now everybody's trying to figure out their own business model one week at a time, the best of their abilities, getting their staff back in place, following the COVID-19 guideline. Now with the beach being open, that presents, you know, new challenges and new hurdles that businesses can have to adapt to with an increase in the crowds. So, you know, hopefully we'll get some more feedback this next coming week on which ones will be able to, you know, open up the outdoor seating or make the changes necessary.
And how has, um, and maybe this could expand to Chief McManus, too. Are we seeing an influx of calls? Are you, have you heard that businesses have had to make many calls to support the, those regulations that are in place, like the mask-wearing? Have we, have you received any feedback about that?
I mean, from what I know, most of the businesses are having fortunate themselves. I know, uh, Zelda's and Marter's have done an amazing job doing it themselves, their front door. Um, we're telling our customers the same thing, wearing masks. Most, every business has the social distancing guidelines and the masks, you know, signs on their windows where basically says, "No masks, no service," um, and then performing the best they can. It's not always the easiest. Not everybody wants to abide by those guidelines and rules. Um, but we're, we've been told not to serve them or allow them to order if they're not.
And then my last question is about traffic. Um, we were, we had some concerns about traffic kind of backing up and people slowing down to look at those, uh, outdoor diners. Um, have you seen that to be an issue? Heard of any issues?
I haven't seen any issues. Usually if I drive through the village and I go that way where there's some traffic, it's usually backed up due to somebody waiting for a parking spot to fill in, but I haven't heard any feedback regarding, uh, too much traffic or backing up the esplanade.
And if I may, Vice Member, actually I can, uh, comment on the traffic piece of it as well. I think the congestion with the vehicles certainly, um, a couple of weeks ago when we introduced the outdoor dining was a little bit more, um, of concern than it seems to be currently. Uh, but there is a little more congestion because the vehicles are traveling at a slower rate. Uh, but I agree with Anthony, the majority of those cars are lining up, waiting for available parking spots. And, uh, we, we try and monitor it, as I've talked about previously, each day because there are times when we need to restrict access to the esplanade from further vehicles because the congestible vehicles and potentially pedestrians crossing the street is just, just too much for a period of time. That usually only takes about 15 minutes to clear. Um, but I think that it's very manageable. I'm not greatly concerned about the congestion. Um, the, the shorter or the, um, reduced width entering the esplanade, um, is the probably most difficult area, but it's not unmanageable at all, uh, from the PD's perspective.
Great, thank you. Those are all my questions.
All right. I don't see any further questions from council, so we will open public comment on this item. Does any member of the public that would like to speak to council? Uh, turn it over to Larry.
I, I do see someone with a, with a comment. Brief hand, Janelle?
Hi, I just have a question. First of all, I'd like to thank, uh, your, your board for going ahead and approving or recommending a reduction to the assessment fees this year, 25%. That's very appreciated for the businesses that are undergoing such extreme stresses. And then the second thing that came to mind while hearing the discussion was that it sounds like there's a need for some of the businesses potentially to have assistance with the purchase of tables. And I don't know if that's something your council would like to consider, uh, the use of the CARES fund or the CDBD funds, that that might be an opportunity to offer that funding for those businesses that don't have available to purchase their outdoor seating. That, that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Larry, do we have any, I don't see any additional, uh, hands up.
Yes, I, I don't see any hands, and I do not see any emails on this item.
All right. Uh, with that, we will bring it back to council. Uh, just want to acknowledge that we, um, we are considering the use of our CDBD CARES Act funding and, and how that will be used. And a portion of it, um, will be, uh, uh, for, uh, small loans or grants for, uh, our, our business community. Um, and that's something that we're still working on the details of, but that is a possibility for them to, uh, choose to use that fund if they receive it, um, for that purpose. Um, I'm gonna see if there's any additional, come back to the panelists. Any additional comments from council members? Uh, Councilmember Botorff? Uh, you're still muted, Councilmember Botorff.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to comment on maybe the, uh, the traffic that was brought up. Uh, I think that one thing we need to, to recognize is that, uh, with the opening of the beaches, I expect the traffic in the village to substantially increase. Uh, so this will give us a true test as to, uh, you know, monitoring how traffic flows through there and how the congestion may affect, uh, the outside dining. I know that I proposed a, um, a possible alternative to an express lane when we first set up the plan. I'm not ready to recommend that. I'm going to be watching this. I think we're all going to be watching to see how the opening of the beaches affects everything. And, uh, that, I just want to let the BIA know that, that, that option, at least in my mind, is still on the table. Uh, but we're going to have to watch and see how, uh, how, how we open the beaches and how this will put us in the full swing, uh, and see how that goes. And like I said, if, if, if it turns out that it does create a problem for the outside dining, that's something I would like to bring back to the council in, in our next, uh, COVID update. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Botorff. Any additional, uh, comments from council? Okay, seeing that, we were looking for a motion. Let me make sure I'm on the right item here. Yes, so we were looking for a motion, uh, to accept the Capitola Village Work Business Improvement Area, uh, annual plan and budget.
Council move.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Vertron and a second by Councilmember Botorff. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Vertron?
Aye.
Councilmember Botorff?
Aye.
Councilmember Story is recused. Vice Mayor Brooks?
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson?
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries, uh, with four, um, four voting in favor and one, uh, recusal. Moving right along, uh, do we have Councilmember Story back with us? There he is. All right.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 8D, Consider a Resolution Allocating the 2021 Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account Fund.
Evening, Mayor Council, once again. I'm going to reshare my screen. Mayor Council, item 48 tonight is, um, adopting a resolution regarding our road maintenance rehabilitation funding that we get from the state of California. Um, a little background here, the road, the road maintenance and rehabilitation account, also known as the RMRA, was enacted in 2017 and provides dedicated road funds to the city annually. The RMRA requires an annual adoption of a resolution specifying the projects to be funded. In fiscal year 2021, the, uh, city is expected to receive a little over $193,000 from this funding. A little history on the, on the funding. Uh, the last two years of the RMRA funding went toward the recently completed Park Avenue sidewalk project. Uh, looking at other sources of, um, our use of project money, not, I'm sorry, RMA, is the last significant road paving project the city has completed was in 2018. So two years ago, we did a $350,000 citywide slurry. In 2016, we did a significant $1.3 million paving project on Park Avenue, Kennedy Drive, and Monterey Avenue. And also in 2016, um, this was in conjunction with a sanitary sewer project that went through the area. We did pave Rosedale Avenue at the price of $267,000. Those are the improvements we've made, uh, to the pavement in the city of Capitola over the last few years. Um, looking at road funding in general, the city has three sources of dedicated road funding coming in in 2021. Of course, there's the RMRA. There's also the Measure D RTC funds, which we anticipate, uh, $250,000 coming in. And we've also, this year, the RTC granted the Regional Transportation Improvement Program funds on a, um, formula basis rather than on a competitive grant basis. So, uh, over a three-year period, we have $505,000, um, from that fund, which we can spend on this project. We can spend it whenever we want. We have about three years to spend it. Um, so I give us almost $950,000 to spend on road funding this year, um, or transportation funding. These can be, as we did in the past, on sidewalk improvements. We built pre-bike lanes with this. We have done some paving with this money in the past. But given that we're supposed to be spending about $750,000 a year on just pavement improvements in the city of Capitola to maintain our pavement condition, at this point, we're recommending that we combine all three of these sources and develop a pavement management program project. It can be more than one project as we move forward, um, but I think it should all, my recommendation is that all goes into pavement restoration. Um, looking forward on how I want to move forward with this project. Uh, based on the input received tonight from council, staff will complete a preliminary repair alternative study and cost analysis on the identified street segments. Um, I would say over the last five years, uh, the way cities and jurisdictions are protecting their streets has changed. It used to be you either slurry sealed it or you dug it up and put down new asphalt. Um, we have seen a, a change in that, um, not for the worst streets, but some of the, the middle ground streets where you can do, um, more different angle layers and, and add different layers, a rubber layer or a bigger rock layer on top of some slurry. So, um, we need to go through and do that analysis on whatever streets we decide to include in this project tonight. And then we'll return it, uh, when we've done that analysis, and that'll finalize the scope of work. Uh, in the resolution, we're going to identify a bunch of streets that we're going to, um, look at, but it's always possible for us to make either amend the resolution or as long as the streets are included on what we build, we will be fine with the state. Um, staff has proposed a list in the agenda report. I'll be going on that in a minute. But just be aware that the cost of the streets listed in the agenda report exceed what our funding is already. Uh, council certainly can add or modify this list. Council can tell me what their priorities are. And, uh, adoption of the resolution does do, does need to occur tonight. We are required to file a report by the middle of July with the state to secure our funding. So these are the lists or, uh, projects that were included in the agenda report. Uh, 42nd Avenue, Diamond Street, and Ruby Court were all projects that, um, street improvements that were delayed. Uh, they were funded at one point, but due to increasing costs, uh, were taken out of a project. You can see here the pavement condition index. Again, that's from zero to 100. 100 is a brand-new street, like Brummer is now. Um, and so zero to 100, you can see these streets are, uh, in need of repairs and repayments. The cost of that, uh, from an estimate that was done, I believe, two years ago, was $1.3 million. So we're at 950, so we're, it may be possible that we can find other treatments for these streets that doesn't require, uh, removal and replacement, but we need to look into that. 41st Avenue is always something I think we should look at funding. Um, Highway 1 to Capitola Road is something we should look at, especially from Claire's to Highway 1. But of, uh, high importance, I think, is addressing the intersections at Claire's and Capitola Road and 41st Avenue. I estimate those, just repairing those intersections, uh, $400,000. I've estimated pavement condition index on this. Um, our report doesn't break out intersections when we look at it. It gives bigger sections. But I'm sure all of you have traveled those intersections and can see the wear and tear that has gone on on those intersections, and they're, they're pretty dire need of some attention. Uh, Claire's Street is another, um, project that has a PCI of 18. Um, we did apply for some CDBD grant money several years ago that we were unsuccessful on. Uh, we do have some money set aside in the CIP already. Um, that's to do some pedestrian improvements, but to pay that, it'd be about $1.2 million if we need to repave it. Again, we need to look at and see if there's an alternate, uh, rehabilitation method that we can do. And that Day Avenue and Capitola Avenue are both, uh, quite heavily traveled streets, uh, getting from the freeway to the village. Both of them are, uh, in need of repairs. Both of them have a PCI of about 80 at this point. Um, certainly there's some failed sections in there that we would need to get into, but it's something where a slurry seal or some advanced, uh, surfacing may work on those. Unfortunately, I, I can't give you an estimate of what those would cost at this time. Um, looking at additional considerations the council may want to do is, um, develop another citywide slurry seal project like we've done in the past. So we usually run between $300,000 and $400,000. Uh, the streets would need to be determined. Uh, we would, uh, go through our, our list and, and look at the best ones to identify kind of on a citywide basis. And if the council wants, they could set the, uh, percent of funding that we want to put into that slurry seal project. Uh, the council can also identify other street segments they want to, want me to add to the list that we studied. So this is a map, uh, from 2017, uh, the last time we did a thorough study of our street segments. It shows the pavement condition index. Um, green is good. All the way down to red is, uh, very poor. Um, so this guy gives you an idea of where we're at. I think overall, the pavement condition index in the city is about a 60, which is in the good to very good, uh, conditions. Our residential streets are doing better than our arterial streets. Um, but, uh, so this is the map if we want to refer to any streets as we're going through our deliberations tonight. So our recommendations tonight is to receive direction from council on the, the street list for this project and adopt the proposed resolution allocating the 2021 Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account Funds to engineering and construction of pavement management program project. That's my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Uh, council members, are there any questions? I see Councilmember Vertron has his hand up.
Yeah, I was just wondering with the recent work on Capitola Avenue for the sewer redo, um, how does that affect this, uh, the, the, the index? Uh, right now it's at an 80. What would it be now, do you think?
Well, they did trenching, which lowers the index, but they will be slurry sealed, and I see that as a net wash. We'll probably remain in the 80 area with that project.
Okay, so in a sense, it'll get a complete re, well, in terms of slurry seal, it'll look pretty good.
Correct.
Um, the other thing I was wondering about is Claire's. You know, that's been on the middle burner for a long time. And you're proposing for a complete redo of Claire's. Uh, the thing I've been talking about is, you know, and we received a lot of letters about this, is we need crosswalks there. Um, the condition of road is one thing. Um, I'm not sure that speeding is such an issue. I haven't, uh, last time it was reported there was no accidents. Maybe the police chief could talk about that and speeding citations. But the main thing I'm worried about, especially for, um, the residents that are elderly, uh, there's just no crosswalks. And we really need those. So that was going to be a Claire's light. I don't know where that stands.
So that was going to be a Claire's light, I don't know where that stands at this point.
So there was money identified in last year's project, there was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars put into Claire's pedestrian improvements. We actually have a project that, scope that has been put together. We are just trying to formulate how best to hold a community meeting at this time, it's kind of been held back because of the pandemic we're in, holding a workshop, we're working on the best way to proceed with that. But we can proceed with pedestrian Claire's Light project without any additional funding at this time.
So, another question, so we could do the intersections of forty-first and, excuse me, Wolf Road and Claire's Light for the whole street? Independent projects?
We could do the pedestrian improvements and the intersection, the pedestrian improvements on Claire's are already funded, regardless of tonight's funding.
So we could, and then the intersection, okay.
And the intersections would be part of the pavement management program tonight, thank you.
Any additional questions from council? Vice Mayor Brooks.
Yeah, thanks Steve for the report. I'm just wondering, why would projects be presented and included in the resolution if we can't afford them? If they, you know, that, there's more than nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars?
At this point, as I mentioned in my report, we want to evaluate the exact cost. I don't think there's enough money to, for example, pay, repave Claire's Street. But there may be some other treatment surfaces that we could do, if that's the priority of the council, that we, we could afford. And I would like to be able to do that further analysis and report back to council as we finalize it. I, I will apologize that this resolution's coming to you in such kind of late notice. We, we kind of flipped with the pandemic, it should have come to you earlier. Unfortunately, we need to get the resolution to the council, so I'm putting in all the streets we can think of that we think we want to cover, and then we will address and come back and finalize that scope at a later date.
And going back to your original slide, so there's going to be at least one project on there that will be within the nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, because there were some unknowns, and then the others were over a million. So we're hoping that one of them will fall within that budget.
Yes.
And then, can you tell me what, so this, I think was before I, I was, I've been on council, was there a pending bike project? Bike lane project that wasn't completed, or was that all those green lanes, was that, was that completed in Capitola, or was that just like, I'm not sure how that worked out, but I know that we could use these funds for that, for those purposes, for green bike lanes? And I was just curious why that wasn't on there?
So the green, we did complete one of the first projects, and I apologize if I don't remember if it was Measure D or SB one money, but we did use the first year of those dedicated funds for the red, the green bike lane project that is at the highway over crossings on forty-first, quarter and eighth quarter and Park Avenue. So that was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of green lane projects that we did complete approximately two or three years ago.
And do any of those need to be repainted that we would need to put into the resolution just in case?
No, I actually think they're fine now, we are adding more green bike lanes as part of the Boma project, which is wrapping up right now. And we do not have any other identified areas as we go through, and do these projects, pavement projects, we will analyze whether a green bike lane would be appropriate, that would be included with the funding. So I don't think we need to separate out, at this point, any green lane projects.
I think we may have, Vice Mayor Brooks may have frozen there, so we'll see if she can come back on. Any additional questions from council?
I do.
Well, was that Vice Mayor Brooks, was that the end of your questions, or did you have more questions? All right.
I have a question.
Admiral, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you, Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, I have another question, and I was thinking about the intersection of forty-first with Claire's. We've had a lot of complaints about the turning right at the signal, and, you know, that was sort of a comment when we first changed that intersection, mostly coming from the direction of the bank and Burger King, changing how the, the turns went. The other thing I noticed is that coming out from behind the bank, that, that street that's sort of, that little alleyway, rather, you know, a lot of people are always waiting there and trying to make a left turn or a right turn. And so if you look at that intersection, can you extend that out a little bit so that it goes down to maybe trotters, so we could maybe improve that intersection, if that's a possibility?
So as part of the Claire's, the larger Claire's project, we did do an analysis of that intersection. I don't think we made a whole lot of changes, it's, it's a very busy intersection. There's significant amount of traffic going, I mean, forty-first is the busiest non-highway street in, in the county, and that intersection is probably one of the busier intersections in the county. The safety improvements, when we put the no right on red and changed the turn lanes, have significantly decreased the traffic accidents at that intersection. So from that point, I realize it may be frustrating, but it's, it's safer, which is always our primary goal. We can certainly look at it if we do do an improvement project in that area and make sure we're, it's as efficient as we can make it.
Okay, but, you know, coming out from that parking lot, that's an issue, I've, I've seen a lot of problems there, you know. I walk that way a lot, so that's why I notice them, so.
I'd be happy to look at it.
Thank you.
All right, Steve, I have a quick question. Right now on Cap Ave, there's some construction going on, kind of from City Hall to where it meets Bay, essentially. And, and I'm not sure exactly what's happening, some kind of underground work it looks like. Do we anticipate that the pavement there is going to be as good as it was before the project when they're done? And I only bring that up now because it's, as it stands right now, that it's, it's a nightmare on my suspension for my car, so I don't know about anyone else. Do we, do we anticipate that it's going to go back to the way it was before the project in that particular strip of, of street?
So I would say it's going to be better, so it was a, a county sewer project replacing a, a maintenance problem, hey, we're having a sewer line. We have worked with the contractor and caught, passed the worst areas on that street that weren't eaten out, were outside their trench. It's something the city worked with the contractor to do, and then they will be slurry sealing it, the entire length from City Hall up to Day Avenue. All those improvements will, will make it smoother, but they're, you know, it's still a, an older road, and that's why it's kind of included in this project list that I've proposed tonight, but it will be better, it won't be worse.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, seeing no additional questions from council, we'll bring this item to public comments. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the council on this item?
Mayor Peterson, I do not see any hands raised, and I do not see any emails.
All right, in that case, we will bring it back to the council for deliberation and a vote. And I think I saw Councilmember Botor's hand, and then we'll go to Councilmember Story.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Steve, thanks for putting this project together, I know this is always tough to figure out what to do. I have concerns, you know, I know you're going to give us a presentation about what, what projects you think are best, but I know you and I have talked over the years about the forty-second, Diamond, Ruby Court area. And my concern is the further deterioration of that area to a point where, you know, it, it can't be paved. So for whatever it's worth, I, I hope that, I would like to see the money go in that area. And if, if the money's not enough to do all three, as Vice Mayor Brooks brought up, even the deletion of Ruby Court would allow the other areas to get done. But I, I hear you lobbying for the, for these Claire's and forty, and Capitola Road intersections. But I do know that that area is, is crumbling, and I, I just worry about further deterioration. So for my two cents, I, I like that project, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Story.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Well, one, I, I'd like to knew that we accept staff recommendation. But I would like to make a pitch for Fanmar. It's for, I think, for two decades, I mean, the map that Steve just showed, you know, it's red. It's been red for twenty years. And, and as a potential project, I know later we'll be trying to decide, you know, how to prioritize them and which ones. Maybe the other ones will have more priority, but I, I think that, that Fanmar should be on the list, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Story, I'm just briefly would like to agree with that, it's, it's been red on that map, and we'll have to have further discussion with the city attorney on if I would be able to vote on that, based on my proximity to Fanmar, or if I'm allowed to continue discussion because it's an overall pavement management plan. But before we get to that, I'll, I'll go to a Councilmember Bertrand.
I'd like to second the motion, so you can continue, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, oh, thank you, yes, we have a, a motion and a second, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So I think this list is pretty good, you know, I'd like to see the analysis as the director for Public Works is promising us. You know, I believe that Capitola Avenue is going to be very serviceable with the arrangements that we have with sanitation, and you're always working with the contractors, I'm glad you're, you're doing that. Day Avenue is, is, is a, is a street that, you know, we've had plans, I remember when we were thinking about what to do with that street and having it like a more of a boulevard look. Is that something that would be in your plans, or just a straight, I'm sorry, I forgot this question? Or would it just be a straight retaping and, and striping type thing?
Right now, it would be a, a pavement rehabilitation, probably, a pavement and striping, it would not be a street skate project. We do have, in our long-range plans, the Roundabout at the intersection of Bank, Capitola Ave, so we would, we would not want to spend a lot of time and energy at the intersection, it extends a little bit beyond the intersection. So we would be focusing on the parks that aren't part of that project, and would be, because of the funding we have available, focused on pavement.
Okay, so my main focus is on the streets that have a lot of traffic. You know, forty, uh, excuse me, Claire's is to me an issue, that's a safety issue rather than just a surface road condition. And it gets a lot of traffic, so a lot of traffic and the issue of safety is a major problem for me. I think Day Avenue is similar, we have a population at the, at the housing unit off of Bay that go across this street to Nob Hill, I've had letters in the past about that. And also, one of our, our, our Capitola policemen got knocked up a bike there. So there's other issues there that I think come up too in terms of safety. So I'm definitely supporting Claire's and Day Avenue's high, high use and safety later.
Thank you.
For the final analysis, I'll look to your analysis and how much things are going to cost, because that's the ultimate issue.
Steve, can you clarify first, do we need to, you said this needs to happen tonight, so do we need to, in just generally authorize the, the pavement management program project, or do we need to give you specific streets right now?
There are streets listed in the existing resolution, and we, we send this to streets that we intend to do the analysis on in this list, so if we want to add Fanmar, we should add that to the resolution.
Okay. Okay, before I make further comment on that, I'm going to ask our city attorney, because of my proximity to Fanmar, is it appropriate for me to ask for a, is it appropriate for me to, to continue discussing the need for, for Fanmar and to ask for a, a change to the, a friendly amendment to the motion to include Fanmar, considering my proximity and living to it?
So anytime I'm asked a complex question, right before or during the meeting, my response is as conservative as possible because conflict issues are tricky, and I would much rather give you more conservative advice than less. And so my advice would be having not, have the opportunity to fully analyze the question, that you should either not request that, or if one of your fellow councilmembers would like to request it, you should recuse yourself from, for the discussion.
Okay, thank you, yeah, this is a tough one, because, I mean, technically, all of us, based on where we live in the city, are probably in proximity to one of these streets, so that's difficult. So I guess, I, I see Councilmember Botor has his hand up, again, was that a new?
That, that's you, Mayor, yes, thank you. Is it okay?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think that the list that Steve has put together is, is a very good list, it covers streets that serve a large number of people or either are high traffic. The fact of the matter is, is that we're only going to be able to do maybe one of those groups. My concern about Fanmar is that, and I think Steve can expound on this, the, the nature of the asphalt on Fanmar is beyond repair, Fanmar is a total rebuild. And I, I, if, if there was a number that would come up, at, at least the price per foot, the price per foot for doing Fanmar is outrageous, and it serves, or I'm, I'm going to gender guess, maybe seventy, eighty homes at the most, probably not even that many. I, I don't think we get bang for the buck on that, that's one of those things where, where some grant comes along for some downtown village street, or some company that we qualify for. But I just don't think it's a prudent investment of our money at this time, and as Jac mentioned, you know, we have some concerns if we commit to Claire's Avenue. I think that's something we could all justify because of homes and volume of traffic, whereas, you know, the traffic on Fanmar is, is not that much, and like I said, it doesn't serve that many residents. And Steve, I, I would like you to weigh in on what the anticipated cost of a Fanmar rebuild is, thank you.
Councilman Botor, Steve, I don't recollect the final cost. One of the issues with addressing Fanmar is the need to address drainage issues along that street. Right now, it meanders more than anything, so we did have a preliminary design that addressed the the pavement or the drainage on there. It also connects to Terrace, which is in equally bad shape in parts of San Jose, so it's easy to expand that project. Does that recollect the estimate for doing the drainage improvements and estimate for Fanmar somewhere in the million-dollar range?
Thank you.
Um, I have a comment.
I believe Mayor Peterson might be frozen.
No.
So I'll go ahead and jump in, go ahead, Councilmember Bertrand.
Oh, thank you, Vice Mayor. I echo Ed's comments, and, you know, I hate to say it, the other reason why I'm supporting different projects other than Fanmar, it's mostly safety and how many cars actually use a road, so in, in the sense of how many people or vehicles will benefit. And so that's sort of my, my take on things at this point.
It looks like Mayor Peterson was back for a second, but she's no longer back with us. So I see Councilmember Story hand up.
Um, yeah, I'm really good. Excuse me, can you hear me now? Um, yeah, thank you, Ed. I just wanted to respond to the comment about Fanmar, I had the app that it be included as a potential item on the list.
My apologies, I think I, I lost everyone there for.
Yeah, you're back, you're back now. But, you know, this is what I've heard about Fanmar for the last twenty years, we can't fix it because it's in too bad a shape. Based on that logic, you'd never consider it, and you'd never do it, and, and it just gets in worse and worse a shape. So I think all we're talking about is putting it on the list of potential projects, and to disregard it because it would be too hard to do it, or because you prefer some other locale. prefer some other locale, and to, you know, just dismiss this out of hand, but not even being up for consideration. I just don't get or agree with the logic of that. If it's in such a bad shape, then we should be dealing with it and not ignoring it and throwing our hands up. Thank you. So I would like to include with the motion that Fanmar be included.
Thank you, Councilmember Story. Councilmember Botor, you were the second on that motion.
I'm not okay with accepting that on the list.
So the motion dies for lack of a second. I'm going to go ahead and make a friendly amendment to include Fanmar to the resolution. I'll go ahead and make a motion for the recommended action to include Fanmar to the resolution. And that's my recommendation. Am I cutting out? There it goes. It's open for a second at this time.
So Vice Mayor Brooks, my understanding is that Mayor Peterson is in the waiting room as an attendee. So it may be possible for the moderator to bring Vice Mayor Peterson back on?
I just promoted her to panelist. Let's see. I don't see her at this time.
I'm going to go ahead and continue since we have Councilmember Story's hand up.
Oh, if you were looking for a second to that friendly amendment, or asking whether the mover, the motion, accepts the friendly amendment, I'll do either or both. Thank you.
And then this is for our city manager. Shall we go to roll call, or should we wait for our mayor to return?
Larry, did you see Mayor Peterson on the attendee list?
I see, I saw her and promoted her, but I don't see her anymore. She's definitely having some communication issue with wherever she is. I don't see her back on as attendee either. There she is.
I'll give it a second. Mayor Peterson, you are muted.
Yes, I'm back now. Sorry about that. I had some internet problems when I tried to rejoin, but it was joining me in as an attendee and not a participant. So I am back now. My apologies.
No problem. I'm just going to catch you up. There is a motion on the table to include Fanmar to the resolution. And we're waiting for you to come back.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, or just a motion?
We have a motion and a second.
Okay. In that case, I think out of abundance of caution, because I'm right down the street from Fanmar, I will recuse myself from this vote, and I will hand it off to you, Vice Mayor Brooks, to continue this particular vote.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll go ahead and go to roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Bertrand?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Botor?
No.
Councilmember Story? Vice Mayor Brooks?
Aye.
And the mayor is recused, so that does not pass. It's tied.
Okay, so we can go back to deliberations at this point. Does anyone have any comments? I see Councilmember Botor's hand raised.
Motion to approve staff recommendation is adjourned.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Bertrand?
Aye.
Councilmember Botor?
Aye.
Councilmember Story?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brooks?
Aye.
Thank you. And the mayor is recused.
Oh, excuse me. I'm so sorry. I apologize. Mayor Peterson? Aye.
Thank you. So this passes.
Thank you. All right. And thank you for your patience with me. Thank you, Vice Mayor Brooks. Let's move on. We're going to move on to 8E now, approving the plan, specifications, and construction estimate for the flume and jetty rehabilitation project.
Once again, good evening. One more item from me tonight. Sharing my screen. So my final item tonight with you is the approval of the flume and jetty rehabilitation project, approving the plan, specifications, and estimate in authorizing. Steve advertised for construction bids. A little background, the capital improvement program project list includes three projects that are funded by the Measure F funded, Measure F funds. This includes the Wharf rehabilitation project, repairs to the flume, and repairs to the jetty. The flume and jetty repairs, since they're both on the beach, have been combined into a single project, and the permitting plans and specifications are all complete, and the project is ready to dig. The Wharf project has recently completed its sequer review and clearance, and we are now entering the permitting stage for that project. I would say that'll take another year to get all the permits, at which point we will be ready to proceed with that project. Flume and jetty scopes and estimate, the flume, the goal of the project is to stop leakage in and out of the flume caused by cracks in the concrete, and also to stop leakage that flows underneath the flume, resulting in sinkholes on top of the flume. Right now, we need to go over the flume every morning to make sure we don't have any sinkholes. We're also doing a repair to the structure, taking off the top of the flume, louts probably 40 feet, and reinstalling it. That is heavily worn, as that's exposed to the waves. The flume improvements are projected to cost $560,250. The jetty project is to reestablish the rock pile as it is to its original design size. Over the years, it has, the rocks have settled into the sand and mud, and it reduced its effectiveness. We will be restacking the switch rocks that the contractor is able to grab and put on there, and he'll also be importing new additional rocks. The estimate for the jetty repairs is $238,250, bringing the total project to $798,500. In 2019, the city submitted a grant to the Department of Boating and Waterways, or Division of Boating and Waterways, for beach restoration and erosion control funding. At that time, in February 2019, we agreed to hold off on awarding, bidding the project to see if we were successful in the grant award. Currently, the proposed budget does not include any funding for this program, and it's unlikely there are any changes at this late date, given the state of the state budget with the COVID impacts, that that funding program will be funded. If they do go forward with a future-year program funding, we would have to resubmit an application. So that would be at least another two-year wait. So staff has now recommended that we proceed with the project using Measure F funds. Looking at the fiscal impacts, existing funds, cash available, nothing to be expended. This doesn't include any extended funds. So the flume has a balance of $396,000. The jetty has $543,000, bringing that subtotal of flume and jetty funds to $940,065. Wharf has about $950,000 in it, leaving a total of $1.9 million available for these Measure F funds. The construction, as we said, for the flume and jetty is estimated $798,500. We will do, need to do some significant monitoring for wildlife and wildlife impacts during the project. We estimate that will cost $40,000. And we've included in here a 20% contingency, which brings us slightly over the amount for the flume and jetty, but certainly, if we have the Wharf funding, we have sufficient funds to move forward with the project at this time. So the project schedule is approving the plans and specifications. That's tonight's meeting. We have scheduled the bid opening for July 29. We will bring a contract award to the council on August 27. And the scheduling for the construction is a little different. Usually, when we award a street project or a sidewalk project, you know, we start within a month or so of awarding a contract and have a certain amount of working days. So it's going to be a little different because we're working in the beach environment. First thing is, we need to wait until the first rain to open up the creek, so that the flume is no longer in use, as it is today. That allows the contractor to get in and work on the flume without impacting the flows. So that's usually, that opening of the creek usually happens in October or November at the latest. And then, because they're going to have to be working in storm and in tidal environment, they may have to stage different parts of work at different times. And we've given them a completion time to complete the project prior to next summer, so May of 2021. We anticipate each project to take about a month in and of itself. So depending on how the contractor and weather and tides all work out, it's two months worth of work, somewhere between November, we anticipate, and May. So our recommendation tonight is to approve the plan, specification, and construction estimates for the flume and jetty rehabilitation project, authorize the Public Works Department to advertise for construction bids, and set the bid opening date for July 29, 2020, at 11:00 a.m. That's my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Apologies. I'm trying to do this on my phone now, so that my internet doesn't give out again. My data can back it up, but it makes it a little bit trickier on my end. So thank you, Steve. We will bring this now to council questions, and we'll see, I might have to rely on one of our staff members to tell me if someone's got their hand raised now, because I'm on my phone and I cannot see that. I will try to join from my laptop in the meantime. But if one of our staff members could let me know if any of the council members have their hands raised for questions.
I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Okay. If there's no questions from council, we'll bring this to public comment.
Mayor Peterson, I do not see any hands up in the Zoom meeting, and I do not see any emails on the side.
Okay. Then we'll bring it.
I think we lost Mayor Peterson again. Okay, so we'll bring it back to council deliberation. I see Councilmember Botor's hand up.
Our motion to approve staff recommendation.
I second.
Great. We have a first and second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Bertrand?
Aye.
Councilmember Botor?
Aye.
Councilmember Story?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brooks?
Aye.
And is the mayor back?
Okay, so that motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
And now we're moving on to item 8F. And this is Katie's item.
Good evening, council and mayor. Hopefully, it's back.
For now. Thanks, Katie.
Oh, there you are. Okay, so this evening, I'm going to present to you an update on SB 743. Can you see my slides okay? Okay. And SB 743, I'll give you an overview of level of service and how under SEQUA, the new evaluation will be under vehicle miles traveled. The quick reminder on SEQUA projects, which would cause a significant environmental impact, should not be approved under SEQUA, as proposed if there are feasible alternatives or mitigated measures that would lessen those effects. This evening, we're going to get into the details. Really, it'd be great to give you a 101 on SEQUA first, but I think the first slide, just knowing that what we're really talking about is whether or not there's a significant environmental impact associated with the project, and how we're going to review that in terms of transportation in the future. That's really what the overall goal is for this presentation. So we'll start off with level of service. This is, level of service is how we currently review traffic under SEQUA. It's a measure of delay or congestion. When you're stuck at a red light, or you wait three times before you get through a traffic light, that's a very low level of service. Under SEQUA, auto delay and congestion is currently an environmental impact. As of July 1, that will no longer be the standard. So as I mentioned, there's a grading system of A through F. The longer the wait or delay, the lower the grade. So an LOS of F is failure. And on this slide, as you can see, an LOS of A is kind of the early days of COVID, I would say, in Santa Cruz County. And now LOS of F is, you know, what we've experienced for a few years along Highway 1, and we hear that regularly at our interchange on 41st Avenue. So typically, under LOS, if you widen the streets, your LOS improves. So under the state, there's now a movement to go to vehicle miles traveled under SEQUA. So under vehicle miles traveled, what we're looking at is the, just as it states, the amount of miles that are traveled, and it's per the type of land use. So on this first slide, you're seeing a home, and to calculate vehicle miles traveled, you would look at, within this home, there's three residents. There's a child going to school. There are two adults, one who goes shopping, the other who goes to work. When they calculate the vehicle miles traveled for this family, their vehicle miles traveled is the average of 16.7 between the three residents. And another, the same idea for vehicle miles traveled, that would be for a new home going in. This would be for a new office going in. When we look at a new office, we're going to look at the employee trip to and from the office, and that depends on the number of employees, based on the size of the establishment. We'll look at the customer trip to an office, as well as suppliers that are bringing goods and supplies to the office. So within this example, there's 20 vehicle miles traveled per employee when they do the calculations. So under, and so vehicle miles traveled is really looking at each land use and the cumulative miles, and it really looks at the environmental impact. So what is SB 743? It was enacted in 2013. The state guidelines, the rulemaking process took place between 2014 and 2018. In 2018, the Office of Planning and Research adopted the rules. And within that, there's a conversion from LOS standards within SEQUA to vehicle miles traveled. It becomes effective, as I stated earlier, on July 1, 2020. So under, the SEQUA determination under the new OPR guidance, the focus is on vehicle miles traveled, and a project's effect on the automobile delay shall not constitute a significant impact, as it has in the past. What vehicle miles does, this shift, and the goal of SB 743, it promotes infill development. So within your city core, it's allowing development to take place within the core. And it also focuses on reducing greenhouse gas emissions, so not sending your development to the outskirts of your city. And it no longer supports sprawl. So look at the amount of greenhouse gases for smaller trips. Promotes multimodal transit, so it'll look at the bicycle, pedestrians, buses, trains. Also, focus on how new development may influence the overall auto use. It also promotes land diversity. And again, it moves the overall auto use. It also promotes land diversity. And again, it removes the focus on traffic at intersections and roadways. I should say for that, when we're looking at projects, there's still within our general plan, guidance towards minimizing impact intersections. So that could be looked at under any proposal that comes in because it is in our general plan. But in terms of CEQA review, that will no longer be an indicator that can be looked at. So how capital implements SB 743? I've been working on a countrywide, sorry, countywide vehicle mile tool with our neighboring jurisdictions. It's been about a year of meetings, maybe every couple of months. So we've put together some baseline vehicle mile travel modeling. And Kim Lee Horn has been the project contractor on this project, and also Frederick Benteer is on the call this evening. So within that, we set up baseline vehicle miles travel modeling, set individual thresholds by city and county. And then Kim Lee Horn has also been putting together a VMT calculator, which you can see at the bottom of the slide. Developer will be able to come in in the future and put together exactly what their land use is, and their square footage, and the location. And this calculator will be able to quantify what the VMT is per the land use. So pretty exciting stuff in terms of being able to calculate our footprint for new projects in the future. So the steps for implementation under SB 743 is first, evaluate your land use. The second step is to screen for non-significant transportation impact. So these are exceptions. If a project falls within, I think there's about six or seven non-significant transportation impacts, then a project would not have to go through a VMT deep dive analysis. One of those projects is the future of mall in terms of just the CEQA analysis for transportation because there's a metro station on site. Also, because of the, if there's a floor area ratio that's greater than 0.7, there are certain qualifiers in which you can make non-significant transportation impact findings that really are in support of mixed-use multimodal transportation as well as exemptions for affordable housing developments. So next, once you've screened, you determine the significance or threshold methodology. And that's what we'll be talking about tonight is, or what will be in the resolution of adopting our thresholds. And then the scope and analysis will be reviewed for the project. And if we find that the project is over the threshold that has been set, the applicant will have to provide mitigation. And one of the really cool things about the tool that Kim Lee Horn is putting together is the developer will be able to go in and see how much, what percentage they're off by in terms of meeting the thresholds. And they can choose different mitigation strategies. And based on the effectiveness of that mitigation strategy, it will allow them to see how their VMT is improved and know which one is best for them in order to meet the mitigated standard. And then there's always with CEQA, ongoing mitigation monitoring. So from the OPR, their recommendation to determine significance thresholds for new residential projects, they set the standard at 15% below the existing countywide average of vehicle miles traveled per capita. In your packet, there is a residential map. And on that, the majority of the map is green and a little bit of it is yellow. But that's a really good sign because as projects come in, the areas in green would be found to have no impact and could be, they wouldn't have to be reviewed for vehicle miles traveled. The yellow may have to require a small bit of mitigation. The next is for office at 15% the existing countywide VMT per employee. This, in the maps that were provided in your packet, also showed in our major commercial corridor areas, the majority of offices in yellow. And what that means is that the trend has been for those residents working in the offices in Capitola, they tend to commute a longer distance. So as new office land use came in, there would be mitigation tied to those. I think they're at about 10%, not quite the 15%. So there would need to be study done. And then for retail, you need to show no net increase in total existing VMTs. So what would happen there is the, we look at the regional VMT, and so with the mall development, I'll give that as an example, most likely because the mall is in the center of the, well, actually, the mall would, I already told you, would qualify for the exemptions. But retail, the majority of the time when I've talked to Kim Lee Horn, would be supported by our existing land use patterns. And that by putting more retail in our commercial corridors, we're most likely just going to reduce trips because we're making more options in the center of our city. So rather than sprawling outskirts, which we really lack within Capitola. So in this slide, I have the overall thresholds of significance that we'll place in the attachment, the document. And here is a list of common mitigation measures. And there were a full list of mitigation members with the mitigation measures within the document provided by Kim Lee Horn. But typical mitigation includes parking mitigation, transit, education and encouragement, commute trip reduction, shared mobility, bike infrastructure, and neighborhood enhancement. And that concludes my presentation this evening. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution establishing City of Capitola CEQA guidelines and transportation thresholds of significance of 15 as listed in the prior slide in the attachment for purposes of complying with the Senate Bill 743. With that, I'm here, and Frederick Benteer is here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Looks like Councilmember Bertrand has a question.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So in doing this, I guess, software tool, there must be weightings, you know, certain factors are weighted, and that sort of gives you a sense of which things are being pushed better than others. Is there anything of that sort?
There is in terms of mitigation. The different mitigation strategies are weighted. And Frederick, would you like to chime in?
I can't hear him.
I'm sorry, we can't hear Frederick. I'm sorry, but Frederick?
I'm just trying to get an idea of how the tool is constructed.
Well, for any mitigation strategy, depending on the impact it would have on vehicle miles traveled, if it has a greater impact on vehicle miles traveled, it would be weighted more. So it would take down the percentage more.
Is that all factored in?
Yep, it's all factored into the tool.
Katie, can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay. Sorry, there's a system software. So good evening, everyone. So the tool reads back to model inputting out, and the travel demand model does. It estimates where people live and where they go to business, shop, and work, and go to school. So those trips are being factored into what this tool does. So if you say I have a retail site and it's located in this area, the tool goes and geographically finds that location and then calculates the actual distance that it travels, you know, and then it takes IT trip generation information. So if it is a house, it's going to say, you know, 10 trips per day for that house, and then it calculates what the actual VMT is for that specifically. So it is very detailed, and it's very closely linked to the Santa Cruz County travel demand model.
One other question. So right now, there's the recognition, a lot of people like working at homes. Another way to do that is providing places, business places, like satellite that's in Scotts Valley, Santa Cruz, provides an off-site place for people to go to and start commuting to their place of work. They go to a satellite office and work there. Would that be an acceptable way to reduce VMT?
Katie, if you want me to go, absolutely. It's one of the mitigation measures that we have is working from home, right? So we call it telecommuting, you know, and obviously COVID is a great, also not in the bad sense or a good sense, but it's a great example of that it can be done, you know, so we're going to see that happen in the future. Yes, absolutely.
So if a developer made available part of the square footage to do such a location, that would provide a benefit to their project or the approval of their project?
Yes. So they would have to provide sufficient evidence that, you know, in their application, that, you know, one can use that calculation to determine the VMT reduction. And then as the mitigation monitoring happens year after year, you know, obviously, the city will then make sure that the developer implements that measure, right? So if they say, hey, we're going to have people work here for shorter distance, or this number of people will work from home, you know, you can do some trip counts at their driveways and make sure they actually do that. It is a monitoring process also to make sure the mitigation is implemented.
Okay. And I'm still trying to understand weighting. So in a sense, I would expect you'd give more weight to a bus, which might transfer, transport, you know, 50 people as opposed to a car. Is that a good way to understand weighting?
So that's, we call that mode split. So it means that in the travel demand model, right, it will go and based on current data and also future projections, it will give a, so let's say there's 100 people that commute to an office, and we say that 5% of those are going to take the bus, and another 6% is going to take the bike, and maybe some people are carpool. Some of those elements are in the model. It's not, this model is unfortunately not very detailed, but you can do off-model calculations, right? So one of the mitigation tools is to, if a developer comes back and say, hey, I would like to buy for the six people that would like to take the bus, I will pay partially for their transfer tickets, right? Then that's the way you're going to mitigate and calculate that impact. So if the model says the VMT is 10 vehicle miles, you know, for the staff and it's over, right, by two miles, and you say, hey, you'd need to reduce it by 20% to get below, to get to eight miles, vehicle miles traveled, he needs to show you that he's purchased a ticket for the bus, buses, and then you can say that's your mitigation for your VMT impact.
Okay. And are you working with AMBAG on this?
We, so we've used the actual, since the AMBAG model sort of gave some input, but we've used the most recent Santa Cruz County travel demand model. And of course, the AMBAG model is sort of the basis of that because it helps determine the external trips outside of Santa Cruz County. We've also used some big data for trips that specifically leave the county and actually goes over there to the Bay Area, too. So pretty extensive exercise.
So is the Santa Cruz model with Metro or Caltrans Metro, where's that concerned?
This will be a actual, so it's a county model right now, the Santa Cruz County, and between the county and RDC, they sort of maintain, yeah, they maintain the county model.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Looks like Councilmember Story has his hand up now.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. It seems like a very significant change in our CEQA analysis. And, you know, and it's kind of complicated to get your head around it. But I guess the question I wanted to ask is trying to apply it to our real-life situation coming up with the mall and the Moline Dyer development of the mall. Since the mall is a bus stop, which has some incentives included with it, there will be affordable housing, which also has some incentives included with it. It is going to be significant amount of retail, which is, I guess, assumed to be neutral. So I guess my question is, is this new standard going to tie our hands or our ability to require Moline Dyer to make infrastructure mitigations to 41st Avenue and Capetola Road to address some of the significant vehicle miles that are going to occur there, in my view, in spite of these particular incentives? So I guess I wanted to pose that question and maybe hear the staff response. And then also wanted to, what is the extent of our discretion on the side? And it sounds like it's already been approached, approved by the state. So I wonder too, how much discretion we actually have with, you know, abiding by SB 743?
So first, I'll start with the discretion. Under SB 743, we are required to have standards in place, and any new applications that come in after July 1 must be reviewed under the VMT. But we do have discretion in what our percentages are for if we didn't want to accept the 15% regional standard, which is what OPR suggests. And it actually, I think, is a good standard for Capitola where we're primarily, we've got some healthy land uses going on. We don't have much sprawl development. It is all infill development. So I do think vehicle miles traveled is a good standard in which to help with our, you know, carbon reduction and for CEQA purposes. In terms of the, you know, future development, so your discretion is in the percentages, and if we wanted to modify those at all, and Frederick can talk a little bit about what the other neighboring jurisdictions are doing, but I think we've all decided to take the OPR standards, just whether or not we're looking at a regional methodology or just within our individual cities. And then in terms of impacts associated with development, within CEQA, there's, I want to say, 14 standards of review that will be looked at. So it's not only your LOS when you're looking at traffic. You're going to be looking at safety and noise. We'll be looking at, under our general plan, also we'll be looking at the project. And we've got standards tied to LOS within our general plan and circulation. But it just, in terms of CEQA, that analysis will not be available to tie back to the LOS. But there are all the other elements that have to be looked at for environmental review within CEQA that tie back to each project. And Frederick, do you want to add to that?
Sure. Let me jump in here. Sorry, Katie. I just, I think I wanted to directly answer the question that Sam asked, which was with the mall project, does this limit our discretion or our ability to offset some of the impacts? And because the mall project is going to be, is such a discretionary permit, they're looking for a development agreement and a rezone as part of their project, the city does have the same level of discretion. In other words, we're not relying on CEQA to mitigate the project. We're going to determine what the appropriate mitigations are, and we're going to negotiate that as part of an overall development agreement. So in the case of the mall project, which is the large, that's the elephant in the room in terms of the projects coming down the horizon, we still have the same level of analysis and mitigations that we can negotiate. In terms of smaller projects where there isn't that level of discretionary control, that's where the state switch from the LOS standard to the VMT standard will change the kinds of mitigations we can get off smaller projects.
Your statement is correct. So the discretion that you have is within your general plan, right? So CEQA is going to address the VMT impacts. Any other discretion, so let's say you have a level, so the mall adds traffic and the level of service fails, and you need to fix up that intersection, that level of service deficiency that you want to fix is going to be within your general plan. That's where you have the discretion. is going to be within your general plan. That, that's where you have the discretion. The, 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 you, you can actually go and apply that to, to, to the, to the conditions of approval for, for the project.
Ben, answer your question, Councilmember Story?
Um, yes, I did.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor Brooks has her hand up.
Yes, thank you. Um, this is specifically about the resolution on page one seventy-one. At the very end of page one seventy-one, it says that the city authorizes the community development director to update the VNT thresholds of significance. And, um, I guess my question is, how often do you anticipate these changes occurring? Um, and is this something that other cities, you know, is it common that if there were any changes to the threshold, that it's just a, to the discretion of the community development director?
So I would anticipate as new technology comes out, like the autonomous vehicles, and as new, you know, new transportation, um, mitigations come out, is when we would come in and update. Um, and also, um, because this is the first time around on this, and I think we, we are, we've got a whole new tool, um, as we're working through projects and as we realize that if there's, uh, portions of it that need to be updated, I would be, um, bringing it forth to council for updates on the threshold. So I don't, I would, um, we could likely reword this to make it clear that it'd be the, um, community development director. But I think in all of these circumstances, I don't think it would be me in my office updating thresholds, but reporting back to city council if any thresholds of significance were changed.
Katie, it usually also happens when there's a model update, right? So when the next regional transportation plan is compiled by R T C, right, there will be a new model. So by then, uh, trip characteristics would have changed, and there will be most likely be new VNT. So that's a very logical point. Or there's a general plan update. Uh, so those are usually the points at which you will see VNT changes, that threshold may change.
Thank you. I, I would like to see some clarification just included in the language on the resolution. This all fascinates me, and I would just hope that it continues to come back to council for, for discussion and updates. That, that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Story, do you have your hand up again, or was that from your previous question? Okay. Uh, okay. Councilmember Vertron, do you have a brief question before we move on to public comment?
Yeah, um, there's just the mention of the general plan. Um, I need to be reminded. Is VNT addressed in the general plan? LOS, I think, is, but is VNT addressed?
Uh, I, I'm almost a hundred percent certain that it is addressed in the general plan because that, that's really, um, the, uh, the way in which all transportation is going. And, you know, we're, we're talking about building in and infill development and not, um, supporting sprawl. So I can, I'd be happy to follow up with you on that question, um, but I, I don't have the general plan in front of me at this moment, but we could discuss that. I could follow up at a later date.
Thank you very much. I'll, I'll do that.
Katie, greenhouse, greenhouse, all greenhouse gas emissions and air quality calculations happen to VNT?
Oh, yes. That's, that is addressed. That's true. Okay. Thanks very much.
All right. Seeing no additional questions from the comments, uh, we will now open this item for public comment. If there are any members of the public that would like to adjust the council. Turn it over to you, Larry.
Mayor Peterson, I do not see anyone in with their hand raised, and I do not see any emails on this item.
All right. Thank you. We'll bring it back to council for discussion and a vote. Uh, Vice Mayor Brooks has her hand up.
Yeah, I shall move staff's recommendation with the edit to page one seventy-one, uh, section that we specify that it comes back to council. Thank you.
Hold second.
I'm, I'm sorry. Could I, Council, or Vice Mayor Brooks, could you say again what section of the resolution you're proposing to edit?
Yeah, so packet page one seventy-one at the very bottom, the further resolved that the city of Capitola authorizes the community development director to update the VNT. I just wanted to make sure that it was clear it goes to council first and that the community development just doesn't do it without bringing it to council.
Okay. And Sam, under, we had an updated packet, so, I mean, all right, it's, it's one seventy-four at the bottom? Right. Okay, thank you. I, 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 I have that, I have that version. Okay. So it would, how would that, that verbiage change? You would just, you're just proposing to insert, um, authorizes, is necessary and appropriate, um? It seems like, Vice Mayor Brooks, are you proposing to simply strike that provision?
Well, you know what? I'm so sorry. I'm, now that I'm reading it out loud, I fully apologize for wasting your time. It does say that the city of Capitola authorizes the community development director, which in other words means it does come back to city council. So I apologize. So I'll rescind my original motion and just make a motion to adopt the staff recommendation.
Hold second again.
All right. Uh, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Brooks and a second by, uh, Councilmember Vertrons. Any additional comments? Seeing none, we will call vote, please.
Yes, Councilmember Vertrons.
Aye.
Councilmember Botorff.
Aye.
Councilmember Story.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to the final item tonight. Uh, eight G, consider approval of memorandum of understanding with labor groups and adopt salary schedule for June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty through December twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty. Uh, before the city council this evening, as part of this agenda, item eight G, is a recommendation to approve salary and benefit reductions for the following employee groups. Capitola Police Officers Association, Confidential, Mid-Management, Police Captain, and At-Will Management Employees. The At-Will Management Employees consist of department heads and the city manager. The employee agreements before the city council include a six percent salary reduction effective June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty through December twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty for the listed groups, including At-Will Management and the city manager. All listed groups, including At-Will Management and the city manager, will receive forty hours of leave to be used before one, one, twenty-twenty-one. With that, I'll turn it over to see if there's any additional information in the form of the chat support.
There is, Mayor. Thank you for that presentation as required by state law. I'm going to go through very quickly several slides. Um, this was a concession bargaining effort that we went into with our employee groups due to the fiscal crisis associated with the economic downturn from the pandemic. Council and the community will remember that we had a four-point-five-million-dollar budget deficit that we were trying to resolve this year in the budget. The adopted budget closed that gap through two-point-eight million dollars in reductions to non-personnel spending and a one-point-five-million-dollar in reductions to personnel costs. And then a hundred and forty thousand dollars out of fund balance. And recall, that comes on top of about one-point-five-million-dollar in fund balance that we needed to use in the fiscal year we're still in today. So the city and employee groups began good faith concession bargaining in April, and then all, um, all agreements other than the P O A, the Police Officers Association agreements, will expire at the end of this month. We were able to reach six-month agreements with all of the employee groups with the exception of the Association of Capitola, excuse me, Association of Capitola Employees. Originally, the city sought an eight percent furlough from all the groups, which would have closed city hall facilities, city facilities for one day per pay period. However, ultimately, a closure pa, plan was not going to work if we couldn't have agreement from all the groups. It was impossible to, uh, have, for example, your management staff, um, not working every Friday and having the rest of your staff working. So as a result of failing to get the eight percent closure, uh, we ended up, furlough, excuse me, we ended up with a six percent, uh, reduction. It was agreed to by Mid-Management, Confidential, the Police Captains, and Executive Management. Um, so that, the six percent is made up of a two percent straight reduction in pay and then four percent reduction associated with forty hours of additional leave that has to be used before the end of the year. Uh, the P O A has also come to an agreement on a, on a agreement with the city, a two percent reduction in pay, and then deferring their contracted two-point-two-five percent COLA, which was planned for, um, the first of July, to moving it out to January first. The employee concessions that are included in the agreement will result in approximately a hundred and seventy-five-thousand dollars in savings over the first six months of the fiscal year. And as a result of failing to reach agreement with ACE, the city issued layoff notices for three positions within the ACE group. The recommended action for this evening is to authorize the city manager to execute side letter agreements with the, from the existing MOUs with the changes that would be in effect from June twenty-sixth through December twenty-eighth with the following groups: the Capitola Police Officers Association, the Mid-Management Employee Bargaining Unit, the Confidential Employee Bargaining Unit, and the Police Captains. In addition, recommending changes to the Management Compensation Plan that covers department heads, and approve a fifth amendment to the city manager's contract that makes the same changes as other employees. Lastly, I'm recommending adoption of a resolution that approves the new salary schedule. And then as a final step, I would recommend individually attesting that council members would receive the same percent salary reduction as other employees. And with that, I'm available for questions.
All right. Uh, any members of the council have questions? Seeing none, uh, we'll bring this item to public comment. The public comment for this item is now open. I'll turn it over to Larry to determine if there's anyone, uh, seeking to speak or if there's any emails that have come in.
Uh, I do not see any hands raised to speak. Um, I do know there's a couple emails that we will read. Okay. Oh, excuse me. Clicked the wrong button.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson, Vice Mayor Brooks, and members of the City of Capitola Council. My name is Maura Hurley. I am City of Capitola County, an ACE U P E C Local seven-hundred-and-ninety-two member. My layoff is tomorrow. I have decided to comment here as I had not planned to comment at the end of the meeting. ACE union members held three votes in regards to negotiations. On our first vote, our members reached consensus to forfeit vacation payouts and negotiate further with hope of an offer that would enable our members to work full-time. We opposed the furlough of ACE employees and agreed to the suspension of vacation cash-outs. We asked that the city look to other parts of the budget for the remaining fifty-eight-thousand dollars in savings. We wanted to ensure our members can afford to live in Santa Cruz County. We honestly thought that the city would give thorough thought and consideration to the fact that the damage to the economic stability of twenty-four employee households during a global health and economic crisis far outweighs fifty-eight-thousand dollars in value. The city's first response was layoff notices. ACE members were given two days to change our decision or three positions will be laid off. The total compensation for these three positions is far greater than the savings first proposed by the city. The next day, there was a tied vote in the union and a third vote was taken in person by secret ballot. The vote was tied again, resulting in the status quo, no furlough. I received my official layoff notice Monday in the mail, and my layoff is tomorrow. Not one member of my management team has contacted me. I don't know if it is the finance director that dictates this behavior or if it is misguidance from the Personnel Department. When I asked why, the Personnel Officer told me once they gave the letter to the union they could not discuss it with me. This simply is not true. From the National Labor Review Board, quote, "You cannot bypass the union and deal directly with employees." However, you may communicate to your employees accurate information about your bargaining proposals. Website info, N L R B dot gov. Bargaining in good faith with employees' union representative. I have two other personnel experiences where the Personnel Officer has not followed through on his word with actions. Important personnel documents and administrative rules have not been brought before you as promised. My good faith effort with Personnel has spanned two-point-five years and ends tonight with my layoff. Please listen to the Association of Capitola Employees' concerns with compassion. Thank you.
I have another email.
This is Ryan Heron, ACE Labor Representative. The city manager approached ACE in recent weeks and asked us to take an eight-point-one percent reduction in work hours and pay, as well as the elimination of vacation cash-outs for a period of one year. It was explained to us that these two items together would save the city an estimated sixty-eight-thousand dollars for the fiscal year twenty-twenty slash twenty-one. ACE membership voted to approve the freezing of the vacation cash-out for one year, but rejected the work hour reduction and associated pay reduction. ACE does not dispute that there is a real crisis facing the city budget as a result of COVID nineteen. We just believe there are other ways to balance the budget besides on the back of ACE employees. ACE employees are the lowest-paid full-time employees in the city. An eight-point-one percent reduction in pay for some ACE employees could be the difference between being able to pay their bills and monthly rent slash mortgages. For many ACE members, this was untenable and would require them to seek other employment outside the city. Other city employees such as Mid-Management, Police, and Confidential slash Executive Management employees are higher paid in relation to ACE employees, and we believe it is not unreasonable for the city to expect those higher-paid employees to take larger concessions than ACE employees. I am of the understanding that the previously agreed to furloughs for Mid-Management and some other employees will not go forward as planned since ACE rejected the furlough. I do not believe there is any reason why the city cannot do higher furloughs on some units than on ACE. Any refusal to do so would simply be a policy choice, in my view. In addition to ACE employees being paid less than these other bargaining units, ACE employees are also already paid significantly less than their counterparts in neighboring public agencies. As part of our current MOW, the city performed a compensation study using selected comparator agencies in the area. This study definitively showed that Capitola is paying its employees less than the fair market rate for most positions. For example, accountant is compensated at seven-point-five percent below market median for total compensation. Administrative assistant is six-point-two percent below. Assistant planner is five-point-eight percent below. Building inspector two is seventeen-point-two-four percent below. Maintenance worker two is eleven-point-six-seven percent below. Mechanic is eight-point-five percent below. Parking enforcement officer is seventeen-point-two percent below. Receptionist is thirteen-point-five percent below. And recreation coordinator is fourteen-point-six percent below the market median for total compensation. ACE was approaching MOW negotiations in twenty-twenty with high hopes that we would bring these positions up to the market median rate. However, once COVID nineteen hit, that all changed. As a result of ACE rejecting the furloughs, the city manager has issued three layoff notices to ACE employees as of last week. I estimate the salary savings associated with these layoffs to be well in excess of two-hundred-thousand dollars for the upcoming fiscal year. I am struggling to understand why our rejection of a proposal to save the city sixty-eight-thousand dollars would necessitate layoffs that would save this much money. One layoff of a full-time employee should give the city the necessary savings to cover ACE's rejection of the furlough. Additionally, in recent weeks, a full-time receptionist at city hall unexpectedly quit her position. This represents a This represents a large savings that is more than the total savings that was being asked of ACE in the city's furlough proposal. Thank you. Ryan Heron, Labor Relations Representative, United Public Employees of California Local seven-hundred-and-ninety-two.
I do not see any additional emails.
All right, with that, we will bring it back to council for deliberation and a vote. Are there any additional council comments or? Councilmember Botorff, oh, I'm sorry, there you are, Councilmember Botorff, yes, please.
Thank you, Larry. You know, this was a difficult decision for everybody in the council and the City Manager. I think the message that was sent here was, was a time for the city to all dig deep and to try to get us through this. As was mentioned in the letter, you know, when COVID-nineteen came and everything changed, I think that hit the nail on the head. None of this was an easy decision for any of us, and I know this impacts others more than, than some others, just because of the pay rate. It's not an easy thing to do. I'm trying to be optimistic by everything we're doing to try to help the merchants open up, help the city open up, that this solution turns around in six months. And at that time, I look forward to sitting down and renegotiating with these groups and trying to get back to normal. But based on the information that I have available to me and the City Manager presented to the council, I'm gonna make a motion to approve staff recommendations.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, for further discussion? No additional discussion from the council. I want to, I want to acknowledge that we do see that there are two attendees with their hands up right now, but because we did close public comment already, the time for a public comment would have been before the emails and also after the emails were read, when we gave a moment for additional comments. But I do want to acknowledge that you're, you're not being ignored, but the time for the public comment period has been, has been closed. So we do have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no additional comments, we will, oh, sorry, Dr. Panelist, Councilmember Botorff, my apologies.
Mayor, I just raised my hand after acknowledging that there were people who raised their hand. And due to the fact that this format for running a meeting might be difficult, I, I think that if two members want to weigh in, I would make, I would feel comfortable allowing them to speak if it's at the mayor's will, though.
Okay, is that, I'll turn to our City Manager and City Attorney. Is that quite literally at the mayor's will? Is? Okay, all right, in that case, I'm not reopening public comment for all. I'm reopening public comment for Barbara and Ally, who appeared to have put their hands up right as we were closing public comment. So we will allow them the, the normal three minutes each to speak.
Okay, Barbara, you can go ahead.
Hi, thank you for allowing us to speak, I appreciate that. I've been an employee, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I've been an employee for Capitola City for over eight years, and I just want to convey to the City Council, we are more than just members. We are families that are trying to make ends meet. The layoffs and furloughs will cause employees and families to lose their healthcare during COVID, and the council needs to be held accountable for their choice to allow those layoffs. The city's greatest asset is their employees, not the tourists. The council must be considerate in this time of great challenge and suffering. We are in such a time right now. I feel that something that we should consider, that we are a very small city and we work within and around the City Manager and Assistant Manager very closely. And say it's a bit intimidating to voice our concerns when we work so closely to the manager is an understatement, it's quite intimidating. That being said, I have worked here for nearly eight years and I have been a resident of Capitola for thirty-five years. And I don't recall one time that the city employees have not agreed to off, to the offer made by the city when it comes to negotiations. This is really a challenging time. And I just feel that especially our group is such a low-paying group. And to ask for an eight percent cut in pay on the backs of these employees when management and the POA negotiated a far less and when we have so many employees that have recently left, I just don't see the numbers of sixty-eight thousand dollars. And I just feel that as a council, you should look at the entire picture of what the cost savings of these recent vacancies and consider that for these employees, because so many of these employees that, they're just barely making it. And I just feel greatly that we should consider that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Barbara, we appreciate your comments. There's Ally, is the next person with her hand up?
Hi, can you guys hear me? Okay, I had actually emailed twice, but I don't know how that never made it to Larry. Anyway, so my name is Ally Clifford, I'm a Recreation Coordinator with the City of Capitola, and my last day of work is tomorrow. I have one of those three positions being laid off. I have been in the city for just shy of nine years. Excuse me. I'm a Recreation Coordinator for almost two, I'm a three-quarter time employee. I was responsible for all of our recreation classes, independent contractor instructors, our recreation brochure, building rentals, events, marketing, and social media. I voted no on the furlough, knowing my job is at stake because myself, as well as my fellow ACE Union employees, are already so overworked and underpaid, I just couldn't in good faith ask my fellow coworkers to take a pay cut to save my job. A salary study done last year was proof of how underpaid many of us within the city are. My position in particular is already fourteen-point-six below, fourteen-point-six percent below the market median. If you were to take a look at a paycheck for myself or any other of our union members, you would see that the take-home pay is barely, if even at all, enough to be able to afford to live in Santa Cruz County. I will soon be on unemployment, and with a temporary extra six-hundred dollars a week of federal stimulus, I'll actually make more on unemployment than I do now. The proposed eight-point-one percent furlough would have been too much, too huge of a financial hit for many of my fellow coworkers. We already struggle enough if it is, we shouldn't have to struggle more than we already do. I personally don't feel the city has been diligent enough or transparent enough in finding other alternatives besides these layoffs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. All right, we're gonna bring it back to the council. Councilmember Story has his hand.
Well, thank you, Mayor. You know, after hearing Barbara and Ally speak, I couldn't hold back and not acknowledge their pain and how difficult of a situation it is, this is, for everyone concerned. And we certainly hate to see that it came to layoffs, and Ally in particular, and any of the staff. But, you know, everyone's in a dire straits. And all the other staff have agreed to reductions. And, you know, it's unfortunate that, you know, we couldn't get other reductions from the ACE staff. I understand their viewpoint, but, you know, I think it's important that everyone kind of moved together. And I'm hoping, you know, maybe it didn't need to be eight percent. But I didn't, I didn't hear or understand that there was any counteroffer made. But, and so this is where we bend it up. If there's some way, ability to salvage these layoffs, I would certainly be open to it. But I'm really, you know, I'm sorry that we have to lay off our positions at this time. But I think that we felt that we were kind of pushed into that position. So I just want to acknowledge and thank Barbara and Ally for speaking up. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Story. Are there any other comments from members of the council? Okay. I echo what Councilmember Story said in acknowledging the pain and the hurt that is clearly heard here tonight. It's understandable and it's justifiable that they're in, that you are experiencing this pain and this frustration. And I hesitate to say what I want to say next because I feel like it minimizes the hurt that we just heard, and that's not my intention in any way at all. What I want to share is that we are also hearing from community grant recipients that we are causing pain. We are also hearing from business owners that we have caused them pain. We're hearing from residents that we have caused them pain. And it's not anything that any one of us wanted to cause to any of those people. And we are in such challenging times that I know that we are all feeling that challenge. And these are very difficult decisions that we didn't come to lightly. And I want to share that, that we all, well, I don't speak for the, for the whole council, but I speak for myself and I speak for what I perceived in the discussions that were had, that we were all feeling the weight of these choices. Councilmember Bertrand has his hand up too, and I believe he has comments. Councilmember Bertrand is still muted.
Sorry. Just want to recognize that it is particularly hard for the people that are being laid off. I've been in that position multiple times in thirty to forty years of my work experience. And in many cases, under very dire circumstances, where I didn't know they're gonna be able to pay for things for our family. So I totally understand what you're going through. I'd also like to recognize that there's been a lot of sacrifices by the people at work for Capitola, part of the general employees for the city. And so I want to also recognize their sacrifice too. And even though some may be paying more of a sacrifice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have seen additional hands up from council members. I believe, and perhaps the City Clerk can confirm for me, that I believe we had a motion and a second already.
That is correct, Councilmember Botorff was the mover and Councilmember Bertrand seconded.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further comment from council, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
Aye.
Councilmember Botorff.
Aye.
Councilmember Story.
Um, aye.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the end of our meeting tonight. Please take care of yourselves physically and mentally and emotionally, and take care of each other. And we will see you again soon. Good night.
Good night.
Goodbye.